Will you bow with me, please? Father, we love you so much, and what a beautiful day that we can come together, Father, and just assemble. Father, we live in the best place in this world, I believe, and it's not because of just chance, but it's because of the hard work and dedication of so many people in our county. Father, we thank you for our county council and our county commissioners, lead the county and approve ideas, and really diligently work to try to stay on top of things, and we appreciate their efforts, Father. We appreciate the department heads who work diligently within their departments and try to keep things flowing, try to come up with creative ideas, and try to manage money, and really do a great job with that. And, Father, we thank you for every county employee, all the volunteers on the different committees, Father. We thank you for that, and we know that it's a combined effort that makes this a great, great place to live, Father, and we are so blessed. We know that we are under your care, and we just appreciate the opportunity to come before you this morning. Just pray for the commissioners today as they look at the different items and make decisions on them, and I know they do lots of work behind the scenes, and we appreciate that as well. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Everyone should have received a copy of the March 28th Commissioner Minutes. Were there any changes or corrections?
So moved.
So moved, okay. If not, does entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes three zero. Okay. Chris is unavailable to be here. We do have an LPA claim voucher for the Odin Kenneberg Road. Okay, yeah, I've got maybe a dated agenda here. So it's in the amount of $8,919.39 with 80% reimbursable. This should be the last.
Is it the final one?
Never mind, I should have read the entire sentence first.
No, it's not.
So...
Hopefully it'll find a final one when it's...
This is for the rate labor. Oh, for construction engineering, so it's one of the last invoices for the engineering for the Odin Kenneberg Road, so. Does anyone have any questions on that?
It doesn't say final, so I guess we're...
I know. I thought it said my last submission, and then it says, then there was a comma. Okay. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes three zero. Okay. And one thing, before I forget, I wanted to add, just for some brief discussion, is on the 200 North closure for the coal mine that we approved several months ago. Just wanted to kind of bring that back to our attention. We had approved that closing up 200 North.
Right.
And just wanted to see if there was any other discussion that we, I think Ed may no longer be with...
I think Matt Uebler and Ed both are not.
So with that change of the turnover there, perhaps it would be proper for the county to reach out just to see what their game plan is before. Or, not that we need to rescind the closure, but I think we probably need to reevaluate it.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Legally, what are our options at this point? So, check into it, see where we're at.
Okay. Sounds good. I will reach out to whoever the representatives are at REO. REO?
Who are the representatives?
I don't know now, since Matt Uebler and, you might be able to reach out to Ed.
I'll reach out to Matt and Ed and find out, and just so that we can get some reassurance that project...
Everything's still going forward, yeah.
Okay, so I would do that. Okay, next up is the Spartan Energy Oil and Gas Lease update. I believe this is in relation to the airport property. Is that correct, Grant?
Yeah. At the last meeting, there was a request to look into that. It's an old lease signed in the 1940s by the commissioners. We got some information on that. Looks like it's currently being paid into the county coffers. We've received several payments. I think we get a monthly payment. It looks like it's an active lease, and I'm not sure what the request is at this point, but if there's going to be some moving parts out of that piece of property, we probably will want to retain the oil rights. And when I spoke with the owner of the company, he said that they were open to any requests from the county, provided to you in an email, just the costs on what he estimated for moving things around and doing different options. He's flexible, but obviously, doing something will have significant...
Was there also an option to buy the lease out, too?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was a helpful exercise. Each Board of Commissioners inherits kind of what the past 200 years' worth have done, so that was helpful. We have, there's an oil tank out at the airport property, the old county farm property, that does generate revenue for the county, so knowing that, there's really very little reason we want to disassociate ourselves with that. So, I think as far as that particular segment, probably just leave everything as is where that tank property is. Okay. All right, thank you for the research on that, Grant.
Number two. Get to number two.
I think we have different... There you go.
The revision's still in there?
I'm using this agenda.
Number two.
Okay, so this is the...
Number two.
Yeah, I get it. I just want to make sure I throw away the...
You have the wrong agenda.
Hey, thank you. Sorry.
Very good.
All right, sorry about that, everyone reading the screen. I had a different version of the agenda. Okay, so, next up, we'll go ahead and go to the airport board members. Got a letter from Steve Fowler, who will be stepping off the airport board, and I can't remember the person. Do we have a reappoint? Oh, David Gray. But he's on every other board, so he might as well be on this one as well.
This is one of the toughest ones, though.
Yeah.
I'll say that. So, I've been on the board for, I think, two years now, and we've went through three managers out there at the airport, and it's, for various reasons, they've decided to get on board and then resign, move on to something better, or something just didn't work out.
So you're talking about the airport manager?
The airport manager.
Yeah.
So, we were informed, I think, about a month ago, that the airport manager that we had had decided that it wasn't for him. We thought it was going to work out real well, but, so we took applications, and I think we had five applicants apply, and we went through them, and we picked one that we feel like, Erica Burkhamper. She's, she's not a pilot, she doesn't own an airplane, and we feel like that she will run the airport like a business, and we just felt that it was the best fit for us, so we hired, voted for her to come on board, and we think it's going to work out really well as far as airport manager.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No, not any questions.
Okay. So you guys already made that?
We've made that decision, yes.
That decision, that recommendation.
Do we need to approve it?
Yeah.
I think we need to accept the resignation first.
Yeah, so, perfect. So let's go ahead and do this first. So we got a board member, Steve Fowler, who will be stepping off the board, so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes three zero. Do you have a replacement board member yet, Matt? Or Steve? Okay, so we'll leave that vacant for now. Okay, next, we've got Erica Burkhamper, who's being recommended by the Board of Aviation to take over as the director of the airport, and I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right. Thank you for the updates. Look forward to meeting Erica.
Okay.
When will she be on board?
She's actually, well, she's been working a little bit just volunteering, just to kind of get things in, straightened out, because the office was a mess as far as record-keeping, and, you know, it's, as a board, we just didn't know some of this stuff was going on. Maybe we need to pay a little bit more closer attention to what, you know, what the manager's doing, and, you know, it's just, we feel like we're going in the right direction now, so.
So when you, when will she be on board full-time? May or April?
Right.
A few weeks, okay. So her current employer doesn't know, so strike everything we just said. All right, well, thank you for taking care of all that. Obviously, it makes our jobs a lot easier here, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. All right. Okay, next up, we got opening of bids.
You got something else?
If you want to step, yeah, if you want, yeah, that's right. If you want to step up to the podium, Matt, for the runway.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Aviation Commissioners. We've been working with them as the council, trying to get this runway extension project to the home run.
Yes.
So, I'd like to invite up Nick. I'm going to pronounce your last name, Ryan Kawalikowski?
That's cool.
Okay, cool. He's from Woolport Engineering, and he's going to kind of go over the detail, and what we're looking for today is affirmation for you guys to move forward. Like I said, the council has been working on the other side of it, so we've been working with Nick, and Nick's done a great job. I'll let him present that part of it. Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. I think Matt's undersold how much work has gone into this project so far greatly. It's been probably at least two decades of hard work on behalf of the board and the council and, you know, everyone involved, so, you know, first things first, I want to say thanks for the opportunity. I'm excited to talk about it. I'd like to see the project keep going. I want to use an analogy. We're from Indiana, so racing is in everyone's blood here, right? So Indianapolis 500, you get 180 laps through, and, you know, you want to win the race and stuff, and I think right now, we're at 180 laps. We are so close to getting to that finish line. Getting approval today to accept the bids and move forward with construction is what's going to get us to that lap 200 and finish the race, so what I mean by what has happened in the first 180 laps, we've gone through a lot of accomplishments, a lot of setbacks and stuff like that, but just to name a few, the first one is the closing of County Road over north of the airport. That was a huge accomplishment that happened in 2019, I believe, so it's just one example of one of the things that we've done to make this project a success or get it ready for a success, so. The benefits to this project is, obviously, airports are huge economic stimulators for the community. Bringing the airport from its current length of runway at 4,600 and some change, up to 5,000, is going to bring in a new variety, a new fleet of aircraft, specifically turbine aircraft, so that means different businesses, a larger footprint of travel, and ultimately, a larger economic footprint possibility and stuff, so that's, that's the cause for the extension, and then obviously, the airport is a business, and that's why they made the decision to hire who they're hiring for their board or for their airport manager, so this allows the airport to become more self-sufficient ongoing, because they're bringing in larger aircraft, which means more fuel sales, more transient aircraft, because they see the runway length is greater than 5,000 feet, so insurance typically doesn't allow larger aircraft to come in under 5,000 feet, so now that it is going to be greater than 5,000 feet, you should see more transient aircraft, which means more fuel sales, more revenue generation, et cetera, et cetera. So, with the legwork out of the way and the reasons for the project, I want to say that we opened bids. The board allowed us, Woolport, to do the design of the runway extension, starting in January of last year. We completed the design, and we bid the project in January of this year. We opened bids, and thankfully, the lowest bidder for the runway project is also the contractor who will be doing the taxiway project on the airport, so that has allowed us to use good engineering practice and save some money in inspection costs, so we'll be able to, construction management, inspection services for the runway project and the taxiway project simultaneously, which is saving the board, the airport, the community a sizable figure of dollar in the tune of 50,000 or so. So, that's one way we've looked at cutting costs for the project, is running those two projects simultaneously. Another is through coordination with the contractor. We've also been able to trim construction costs down about just shy of $100,000. So the original bid opening cost, the lowest bidder, was 1.3 million. Just, just over that, we've brought the construction cost down to just around 2, or We're also in doing the construction on the west side of the T-hangers. I don't want to go into too much detail, because I don't know how much familiarity everyone has with the airport, but there's a potential to create additional T-hangers, so we are going to be getting that site shovel-ready for other revenue-generating projects for the airport through the runway project. We're using material from the airport and bringing it over to the runway extension, so not only are we creating a runway extension today, we're also planning for future at the airport tomorrow and allowing it to be more self-sufficient, so, you know, with all said, the construction total on the contractor's side is 1,244,209. There's an FAA flight check, because we will be extending the runway. That means new approach or the approach that is currently on runway 18 will need to be amended, and that is, FAA, requires an FAA coordination flight check that is in the tune of $11,158. And then our Woolport Engineering Construction Management costs are $236,845, or $845.00 and zero cents, so grand total for the project to get the runway extended to 5,001 feet is just shy of 1.5 million. It comes in at 1.492. And like I said, we're not only doing the runway extension, we're also planning for the future of the airport and creating other opportunities for tomorrow, so that the airport can be even more self-dependent. Do you have any questions at the moment?
Gentlemen?
It's been in the works for two decades. I know it was talked about when I first took the job with the Development Corporation. That has been 20 years ago. Needed to be done then, and it was considerably cheaper then, but no, I think it needs to be done.
I think it's a worthwhile project for the county. I think it's a must-have, we need it, so.
Yeah, commitment wage is $3 then as well.
Not quite.
But I think the commissioner's been backing this project the entire time.
Yeah, it has.
Now we turn around and just donate a bunch of ground to the airport, too. I think we all three want to see it done.
Yeah, we want to see the airport be successful. We want to see it to be a good nucleus in Davis County, and then we also want it to be as self-sustainable as possible, so putting some business parameters around it where we can see the financials to see, you know, make sure it's more of a user's tax, people that are using it pay for it, and then the county obviously subsidizes it to some degree, but we need to know what that, what that degree is, just, just for good business practices, so, obviously, I got a lot of faith in the airport board, and we have to close that highway down and build some farm roads around it, and fix the farm roads around it, and then refix the farm roads around it. But no, it's been a good exercise, so, you know, Matt updated me, looked at a little bit more of the detail just as far as the financing side, and it sounds like the council's got it pretty ironed out, so I'd be supportive of moving forward.
Yeah.
So, that being said, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the runway extension project.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thanks for all your work, Nick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Speaking on behalf of the board, we're excited.
Dave.
I don't think I can say about Dave. He's working off of...
He looks sleepy, so, yeah.
It gets better when they're about 25, so.
Are you sure?
Well, I don't have a 25-year-old yet, but people keep telling me.
I have a 24-year-old, so.
People keep telling me. Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. Next up, we got the opening bids for the reassessment. So Crystal, if you want to come up to the podium? This is for the reassessment. Actually, Crystal, I'll let you explain what we're doing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is bids for our commercial industrial properties in Davis County.
Thank you. We've got a bid from Brian Cusamato.
With Nexus.
Nexus Group. Typically, Crystal, maybe just explain in general what, what the hope is with this and your purpose.
Okay. So, the hope with this is that we have some commercial industrial properties in Davis County that need to be looked at through the reassessment process. It's been some years since there's been actual boots on the ground at some of these places. We just need to have the people in, need to have the people that are qualified to do the job, especially with the tech part coming in. We need to be prepared for that. So what they'll do is 25% of the county will be looked at. In a reassessment process, it's four years, and we are required by law to do 25% every year. So what this states is that they will look at 25% of our commercial industrial properties and reassess them.
It's like we've got a contract proposal in this particular one, and I believe the statute fixes what the contract's supposed to say. Is that right?
I believe so. Correct.
Turn to page four of the contract. It says a total maximum cost annually, and then the amount for the contract period total. It's $14,100 annually, and then $42,300 for the contract period.
Four-year period, yeah.
Three-year period.
Three-year period.
Three-year period, yeah.
They also have a price for... They, they list a variety of prices. That'll be an annual price, and then for the three-year period. I guess typically what we would do when we receive bids is take those under advisement. You can look over this proposal. I know you haven't had a chance to look at it. Just make sure that it meets your expectations, and then the commissioners can award the bid at their next meeting.
Okay.
And proceed. Is that acceptable?
Yes, thank you.
You currently have the funds in your budget?
Yes. In the reassessment budget.
So just a quick question, Crystal. I know we've had a chance to talk in more detail on this. I can't remember if I asked this question, because obviously, there's a couple of different approaches here, the slow and steady approach to see kind of what we uncover, and then also the, you know, let's get it all done approach. What type of bandwidth does Nexus have regarding the capacity of...
I'm sorry, repeat that.
What type of bandwidth does Nexus have regarding the capacity of reassessments? Because I know everything has to be reassessed every four years, but it's not necessarily, we could do 100% in year one theoretically. Would they have the bandwidth to do that?
They would, yes, if that's how they...
Okay. And not that we want to do that, I just want to see as we go through this.
I think slow and steady is the way we need to go with it.
Yeah, I can, I agree. In an ideal situation, we see that this first 25% has, you know, normal impact, and then we say, okay, just do everyone else next year.
Right.
And then get everyone reassessed, you know, as quickly as possible if there's normal impact, whatever normal means. Okay.
Correct.
Just want to see the options. Okay. And Grant is correct. I will give you an opportunity to go through this contract proposal, make sure that everything is proper, then we'll add it to the next commissioner's agenda.
Okay.
To give you a couple of weeks to make sure it's what you want.
Okay, thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to table the contract proposal for the reassessment.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thanks, Crystal.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Next that we need to talk about are Form 11s. I have a estimate here for, for that. They are Midwest Presort is a mailing company. Most counties in Indiana mail out Form 11s. It is a, it is required by law. It is, anytime we change an assessment on a property, we're supposed to supply the taxpayer with a, they call it a Form 11. It states what your previous assessment was and what changes were made. Anytime we change assessment, we're supposed to supply the taxpayer with that. So this is an estimate for doing that in the future. We'd like to, we'd like to get that done this year, if possible. If we, if we can get this approved, we'd like to move forward this year with that.
Any questions?
It's required by law. We really don't have a choice.
Well, in this one, we do. That's, there's no penalty, but, but if this tells taxpayers ahead of time that their taxes are increasing or decreasing, I think that's very important for the taxpayer.
It's about transparency.
You open your tax bill, and you see, did it go up or did it go down? This tells you when that decision was actually made ahead of time for awareness, but...
And it gives, it also gives the taxpayer a deadline for the appeal process. If they, for some reason, disagree, they can appeal that decision.
So this will go out before the tax, tax bills?
This will be...
In the future, will?
Next year, yes.
Yeah.
So they'll have, they'll have a deadline if they can file their appeal, or they can just come see me and do it, you know, just talk to me, and we can try to sort it out before they do an official appeal.
But in theory, if the assessments go up, the rate should come down. Just because it's being assessed, reassessed.
Correct.
Doesn't mean that your taxes are going up.
Correct.
But it doesn't always work that way.
Doesn't really mean that way. It seems like it always happens that way, but...
Crystal, what's the timeline, like, when someone gets this? How long do they have to appeal?
It's 45 days. Yeah, 45 days to appeal.
So if this isn't sent out, I mean...
Then it's over a year.
Can we make it longer than 45 days? Because 45 days in a busy life is not...
Um, I think that's set by statute.
Always got your hands tied.
Yeah, that's, which statute?
I can get you that information.
Yeah, I guess, I thought it was 60 days when we met. 60 was what was mentioned.
I don't think so.
And that's what was mentioned.
Okay.
So, okay.
And on the auto-renewal, which I know that that's a piece, will you come back to the commissioners annually just to discuss this, to make sure that...
If I, if they want me to. If I need to.
Here's what I don't want to happen. Currently, they have 18 months. Ideally, in Nathan Gapheart's world, I want the, I want the taxpayer to be notified as early as possible that their taxes are changing, and to have as long as possible to do something about it.
Okay.
45 days just seems pretty short, when we have 100, when we have 18 months right now. Is there any way we can wiggle that around?
Um, I would have to check into it. I don't know. I honestly don't know what this, the answer to that.
If we get to a point where we approve this, and we're getting complaints from constituents that they reached out and we're told you missed your deadline, what do we do then to fix it?
Well, they can have an unofficial meeting with me, and we can try to work it out, and that's, that's the first step anyways.
Do you have any knowledge of grant extensions?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want a stiff arm, and, you know. Okay, that's fair.
For sure.
I personally think the Form elevens is something we need to do, so.
And we don't see many appeals in Davis County. Anyways, I don't think that that's going to be a problem or an issue. And if it does, then we'll relook at it.
Promise?
Unless I get one from you.
You won't get one, maybe my neighbor. All right. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but for her question, though, I mean, she needs to come in annually, doesn't she, to present it? I think that way it just keeps transparency for everybody.
That's my suggestion, just so that they're, I mean, because they're going to catch a lot of this if things are fluctuating. Not that that, not that that's fair or appropriate, but an annual update might be a good thing to add, December, January, whenever you think makes sense.
Before taxes go out the year. Okay, I can do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. There's no other questions. I entertain a motion to approve the contract for the Form elevens from Midwest Presort.
No, I want to get the price.
Oh, and the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-seven cents to be paid out of the reassessment.
Sub moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero. Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Next up, we've got the Davis County Friends for Animals. Gary, if you guys would like to come up to the podium. Hi, good morning.
Morning.
We got a request here that the commissioners received for the purchase of the former Davis County Garage Office. I had a conversation with Gary, and then I thought we'd give you guys a chance to come in and talk to all the commissioners.
We currently have no place to store our stuff. We have extra cages. We hold a yard sale, maybe two times a year, maybe more. And we just have no place to put this stuff. Currently, it's stored in attic, another member's shed, and it may even give us a place to meet.
Yeah, sure. Come on up, Gary.
State your, state your name.
Yeah, just state your name for the record, for the...
Gary Mattis, Davis County Friends for Animals Transportation. What we do is we've helped the county and city take dogs, and we send pictures out, and they go to different rescues. We've got two or three rescues. We've got Pennsylvania, one in Pennsylvania, one in New York, and another one in, two of them in Pennsylvania. But what we do is we take the dogs. We've taken over forty, forty-seven hundred dogs in all. Forty-three, approximately forty-three hundred dogs out of Washington's Animal Shelter. That saves them from having to put down dogs, and we used to be able to take cats, but they aren't taking them anymore. But we've taken, we helped the county and the city an awful lot by getting the dogs out and not having it be put down. And we, the city gave us a bus, one of the big buses that they used to have, they gave us a bus, and we transported as long as what we could in that bus. And we transport to Terre Haute, and from Terre Haute, people come down from Indianapolis, and they take the dogs east. And it's, it's a wonderful thing where I hope we were able to keep this up for a long time, but it just depends.
Sure, sure.
Any questions?
Just a few comments, just to say some of what I shared with you personally. You guys do a great service. I mean, your organization and just your caring hearts and taking care of these animals, so really, from a personal standpoint, hats off to you and your organization for taking on this initiative. It's a great cause. It really is.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. The challenges I saw with this, with our space, and with the situation we're in with the courthouse renovation, and the storage of our documents and the storage of our stuff. Whenever we empty that courthouse, we're going to have to find space for people and for stuff for the next eighteen-plus months. And it just, to me, just the timing was just not opportune to start filling up our space with stuff when we don't know what we're going to really need. I love the organization, love your mission, love your cause, but I just had some reservation on, can we, is this...
Yeah, and I understand that. I've been over a couple of times with Gary and had Scott over there to look at it. What they're talking about is just a brick portion of the building, two offices that probably aren't a third as big as this space right here, and could still, the county could still use the garage portion, a couple offices. I'm looking at a building that needs a new roof, probably new air conditioning and heater. It's going to cost us money, and there's not enough space over there to really store much out of the courthouse. We're going to have to find another option for that.
There's still all the file cabinets in that building, or has it moved out?
That's in the garage portion, we will maintain.
I know there was a couple, there was a couple offices that file cabinets at one time.
It's fairly empty. They do have, they have corners caged in for some stuff.
There was, when you walked down the hallway out of the garage into the main area, on the right-hand side, there was two rooms full of file cabinets. I guess they've been cleaned out.
There's still stuff in there.
One room has it. My understanding is soil and water conservation documents.
Yeah, there's old books and old stuff. There's still a lot.
Those can be moved to another part of the building that we would still control. I see they've got a problem. They've done a great service for the...
Well, we've, we've looked for several buildings. We've looked at several buildings, but they were out of town, and forty, fifty, forty, fifty thousand dollars for a garage, and it's got grease on the floors and stuff like that. And I, I'm not many, we would pay money for this building. I...
Yeah, it's not really even a money issue for me. It's more of a...
Yes, sir. Understand.
It's more of a, you know, where's the space, and then, and then the contract to manage that space, and then what can you, and can you not do there, and then access to that space. And it's just, it's just another thing that we have to do right now that, I don't know. I just...
As I said, there's not enough space over there to even address a portion of our problem.
The office.
I agree with that. I just want to address that, though. We're going to be putting space in maybe ten or fifteen different locations, fifteen, ten, fifteen locations. I mean, we're going to put it wherever we can fit it. So every square foot we have in this county could be golden, because it's just going to be a temporary thing. And if we start filling up a few hundred square feet at a time, then we're, we're really going to have that much less space to store, so.
I disagree, but you're one and I'm one, so.
Without question.
So is Purdue Extension still not using any portion of that building for community outreach or anything?
Yeah, there's a lot of questions that have to be asked.
Today, I'm, I need more information on the building before I would move forward with something like that for myself. I know there's, I know we got storage in there, and I know we've had in the past Purdue Extension using that building. I know we built a new kitchen, because they had kitchens facilities in there. I know they got it over here now in the, in the new building.
I mean, I'm the same way. I'm not, I'm not a hard no to me, but I'm definitely leaning no that this is not the right time for this because of what we got coming down the pathway. If Commissioner Arnold wants to do some legwork and do, answer some questions to see, and then help draft some, the contract, because obviously we've got to have a contract to oversee this. I mean...
Well, the question comes by, are we going to sell it? Are we going to donate it to them?
Well, there's nothing to sell, because we got to have the building, and being the building is physically attached. I mean, we can't sell the building.
So what do we, I know we've sold part of that to the city, that lot.
On the...
On the east side.
On the east side, yeah.
The county owns a certain portion of that, and I don't even know what that is anymore.
It includes the building and a little bit of the parking area that would be on the southwest corner, and a little bit directly behind the building. But it could be divided up and maybe not sold, but if we donate it.
For a storage base, I mean, I guess the only thing we could look into, I've not been down, I've never been down there. We've been paying a monthly fee for the Hoover Building.
Because it's heated and cooled.
Right. And so, is it, have you been down there? Is it crampful?
It's not crampful. It gets a tractor in there. We got a bunch of baseball.
No, 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 I'm saying the Hoover Building.
The Hoover Building? Oh, I'm sure they're, I don't know. I'm sure they're quite full.
Yeah, I've not been down there to see them.
But anyway, yeah, I would need more information. I mean, are we talking about an existing building where you're wanting just a few hundred square feet of an existing building? Is this a standalone building altogether? Because the old highway department, I was just down there two weeks ago. We have our tractor in there. We have our equipment in there.
Well, that's not, we are...
We're talking about letting them use. We would still maintain that.
They just want to use the natural...
I think what I'm hearing is if the storage issue is solved, you have no issue with working with them.
Right, but the storage issue, we won't know until probably third or fourth quarter of this year, once we start moving stuff out, because, I mean, we're...
Does that do you any good?
Yes.
And there wouldn't be able to be any, any...
We've been looking for about ten, ten years for it.
We just, we just can't have, I just want to be extremely clear. We cannot have actual animals there.
Yes, sir.
Under any circumstance. We cannot put a kennel in the middle of Washington. And I want to be extremely clear with that.
Understood.
One hundred percent clear.
Well, it was explained to me, storage and office space.
That's where it starts, and I give good-hearted people...
That'd have to be in the contract, though, too, also.
And then someone's going to oversee that.
Yeah.
So, if you want to do some legwork, I go down and physically see exactly where they want it, and then see who owns it. I'm not a hard no on it. It's just we need more information on it.
That'd be great. Appreciate it.
I mean, I thought we'd done that, but again, we've got to find out from the courthouse what their storage needs are going to be.
When you do it, we just need to present it.
I would go down, maybe get, talk to Scott and go down to the Hoover Building and see how much storage left and is available left in that Hoover Building down there.
Because we're going to have to know about... I'm sorry?
I don't know who would pay that, too. Is Kevin Bush on that building?
Kevin Shorty on the space.
Hoover.
Which is Hoover?
Hoover Construction down...
It's what it used to be.
Five hundred dollars a month, so...
That's something old Hoover Building.
Okay. All right, excellent. Appreciate you guys coming. Sorry you're in this need. All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, next up, we got the Lensing Building Specialist Quote Rodney. Is that the front doors?
Front doors, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's already...
We've seen approved that contract.
Yeah, on the, oh, here it is, right here. Okay. For the front doors here, they're automating the other door. There's some issues that just having one automated is causing. So they're actually, we've got a bid here, or invoice here, four thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars for the key switch and for the other power attachment for the other door. So they're in the process of getting that upgraded. Entertained a motion to approve.
Sub moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Okay. Visitors, Davis County Visitors Commission. Okay. There's a quick update on, on that. We're in the middle of the contract renewal for the Visitors Commission. I met with some of the Visitors Bureau members last week, meeting with Tracy Cook, met with him yesterday, meeting with him again today. The Visitors Bureau, I know, is meeting Thursday. So, anyway, nearing the end on this contract renewal, the overarching goal is to ensure that the Visitors Bureau fee is covering Visitors Bureau expenses, just like you'd want in any sector, and that, that it's as, you know, detailed as possible, so that the Visitors Bureau can continue managing the operations that the Chamber of Commerce is...
The way the Chamber manages the visitor...
Yeah, so where's that line where, right, you know, how much of our FTEs are we using from the Chamber, and we need to pay for that? And then what are those people doing for the Visitors Bureau? And the Visitors Bureau Board has to determine what do they do, right? Because they really report up through the Visitors Bureau Board, so that's where we're, that's where we're at, so.
The reason it was set like that, and this was years ago before I was involved with it, but the bottom line is you don't want two, two separate administration expenses.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it will get more bang for the buck, more of the inkeeper's tax going towards actual tourism rather than administration.
Yes.
And what kind of complicated thing was more money, as it always does. And, and so...
The timing was ironic, you know.
So, I mean, I, I think we have to be centered on the Chamber still running the show and have an agreement, but yet still giving the Visitors Bureau the leeway to make decisions on what they're funding.
I agree. I agree a hundred percent. The Chamber has to be the administrative lead, but the Visitors Bureau has to be telling them what to do, you know, and that's, just keeping that line. Because ideally, at some point down the road, when we get a convention center, we need both of them housed in that convention center to help maintain.
Yeah, working together.
More to come.
At a couple meetings ago, you all talked about bringing money back in to be housed by the auditor, and maybe, we've talked about it over email, but maybe just give yourself and the auditor an opportunity to explain the progress that we've made on that.
So Misty and I did go to a Visitors Bureau meeting, and we discussed with them trying to get that taken care of. Two of the board members has worked with Misty on getting those, their budget lines moved over into our system. So we were trying to get everything set up before the actual check is written back to the county, so that should be coming at the latest at the end of the month. Everything should be back in-house.
Thank you. We've made progress on that front. I know we've had some contract proposals that have been sent back and forth. I think that's in process.
It's in process, yep. We'll get that hammered out, so. More to come. Any questions or...
I, I did want to ask about, I've sent an email to council and commissioners relative to modifications to our ordinance. It's just a handful of things that I think need to be modified. I would like to get your all's feedback, if you've got any. It doesn't have to be right now, but I've asked for this update to be on the council's agenda tomorrow as well. I just want us all to be on the same page as we're moving forward.
No, that's a good point, because in the ordinance, and again, it's, it's just, you know, we've been doing this for two-hundred-and-seven years now, so you, people forget about stuff. So the, the way I understand that ordinance is that the Visitors Bureau is an advisory body of the executive branch. So we appoint the members, they basically do their thing, and we're the overseeing body. The council helps fund it, and we help oversee it. You know, we've been pretty much, it's been a standalone board for a number of years, so what happens over time is they get the sense that they're a standalone entity, and that they're... So this is just more of a refreshing that the executive branch is the ones who oversees their contracts and, and all the funding, because we are dealing with tax dollars, and obviously, the council's involved as well. So just a good refresher for all of us, so. But they're doing some good stuff. They're definitely motivated. They're moving. So we'll get this thing hammered out. And that ordinance, do we have that fresh copy, or...
We, we have my suggestions. I sent them out in March. I sent them out again here recently. Ideally, if we can include that on maybe the next agenda, if there, I mean, there's...
That'd be great.
We can definitely do better with, with our process, and I think bringing it in-house will be better, but there does need to be some modifications to the ordinance, so we don't... But we maintain, county maintains oversight of what's going on.
Yeah, when we get fresh commissioners, they can hit the ground running. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Next up, we've got the Mayor Deputy Policy. Sheriff, how are you?
All right.
Good.
I'd asked a couple of weeks ago about a new policy to be put into our handbook. I think this is in your purview, mine, but I reached out to some different law enforcement agencies and also the people that do our policy, Wagner...
Erwin Shealy.
Muncie, yeah. And they sent me this policy back. Got it. Basically, it has to do with, like, if a city policeman wanted to come over with the sheriff's office, they would maintain their years of service for longevity and their vacation rate as to where it would fall into us. So if they've had over fifteen years, they would get the hundred and sixty hours vacation type of, type of a deal. A lot of law enforcement agencies are going to this to try to attract people to work. The retirement section of this does not apply because city, state, their city is on the nineteen-seventy-seven city fire and police retirement, and that's completely different. Like, we had a Martin County deputy come over. He came over, he started over his years retirement as, as one, because every county pays their deputies. It's not a statewide program, so. It does not affect retirement. It just affects longevity and vacation.
And like pay, I mean, go back to whatever you guys are paying. And like pay, I mean, go back to whatever you guys are paying.
Deputies will all make the same now.
Yeah, okay.
I did have a city officer interested, but he couldn't afford to take the cut, so, and, and we didn't have this policy in place.
Yeah, it sounded reasonable when I spoke to Gary about it.
Yeah.
As far as the transfers back and forth, and.
A lot of, a lot of agencies have this policy now. State Police have this agency, or State Police has this policy. I, I can think of two city policemen, Davey's still here, here, two city policemen who left the city, and they went to gaming, and they went in as twenty-year troopers on their longevity and on their retirement, or on their, uh, vacation. And that's looking more and more lucrative for, uh, retired police officers, because if this budget's approved, they're going to get a, they're going to get a whop of a pay raise. Twenty-year troop's going to be five thousand.
Any questions, or?
I don't have any issues with this.
Um, I entertain a motion to approve the Merit Deputy Policy. There's no other questions?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. All right, uh, next up, the, um, Davies County Airport property, just more of a, um, just to kind of get this all back on our, um, uh, our attention here. So at the airport, we've done a number of different things. Uh, we're in the process of, of, uh, deeding some of the land over to the airport. The, the County Surveyor, as, as, and the Airport Board have already moved forward on that. So it's just kind of a four-part thing, uh, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So we've already approved, the Commissioners have already approved the transfer of that parcel of land over to the Airport Board. Um, I believe, I just wanted to make sure.
Has it been done?
Which is that we just need.
Have we actually done it?
I know, I know we've talked about it.
We talked about it, and then this, there were some additional discussion points that needed to be, maybe.
I, I have no issue with it.
I have no issue.
Well, that's why I want to make sure we brought it back here, just to make sure we're, we're on the same page.
And what acres we, on that map that we had, that they said that they needed, I, I'm a hundred percent favor of transferring that.
So on that, on that item specifically, because none of those lines have changed, I just wanted us to take an official vote on that action.
Yeah.
Uh, so we can make sure that there's no confusion, uh, what we're for. So I entertain a motion to go ahead and deed over the land, um, as described in that survey, over to the Board of Aviation.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Very awesome. Um, perfect, just wanted officially to get that done. The oil tank update, um, the fact that, that oil tank that's there is not causing the county any issues, it's generating revenue coming in, there's no reason to
Harm, no harm.
To get rid of that.
So retaining, retaining mineral rights.
We're just retaining the entire thing as is, just, just kind of pause that whole process, and now that we know what we know, there's no reason to push that any further, in my opinion, but what do you guys think?
I guess it does affect, um, so the land that we just transferred, I mean, that does affect that land, the mineral rights would, if we, we choose to maintain them or transfer to them.
Oh, okay, on, on the land, okay, I, I see. So we'd have to deed the land over, maintain the mineral rights to that land.
Yes.
Okay, so we can make sure that that's.
Retain the mineral rights, convey the property to them, and I thought that's what this whole discussion was about. That's why we looked at Spartan, what Spartan was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
Clarify the motion, we're deeding the, the described property to the Airport Board, and we're retaining the mineral rights in the name of the Board of Commissioners.
That's right, that's right. And I think that's all we need to do there, because if, if there's a future easement to septic system on the county farm, I think that's not on that particular stretch.
Yeah, they're, they're north of that.
They're north of that, okay.
North of that, east of that.
So that'd be the amended, uh, motion, is to retain the mineral rights, the, uh, described parcel over would be the amended.
Okay, so moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. As far as the.
That works for you, right? That's acceptable.
As far as the actual physical oil tank, in my opinion, there's, it's just not worth the effort to look.
That just, you said it was just, I, what I got in the emails and what you talked about, that's just a transfer tank from the other wells up there to get it transported, all right?
Apparently, yeah, and it's just maybe a thousand, uh, ten thousand gallon tank that sits there, and, and, you know, Pete was just asking, hey, whose tank is that?
Yeah.
And that kind of what, is what.
Snowballed it, yeah.
Snowballed this thing in.
And something to check into, if the well would go dry, they vacate, who's responsible for the environmental cleanup, cleanup?
Should be in the lease, but it's, uh, at least if it's, if it's inactive, it stops, but it's good question, because I'd say it's not clarified in the lease.
On that, since we have the topic kind of uncovered and have the detail, should we reach back out to that gentleman about an updated lease?
Probably should, although he just bought that, and he was pretty sensitive about.
That lease, the only lease I've seen, I think he purchased, it dates back almost to the forties, doesn't it?
Nineteen forty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay, so we guys just.
We're probably needing an updated lease on it.
Clarify with him, if, if he can provide us an update, who's responsible for those types of things, and.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
So let's do that, awesome. Um, they've got the septic tank, okay, this is number three. Uh, yeah, septic field, um, I, I don't know, I didn't research it, but I was, been told by the landowner out there that they, the Commissioners had spent about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on that septic system twenty, twenty-five years ago. To run a small city, um, I don't know how big it is or anything like that, um, but it does involve county resources, um, so we do have a five thousand dollar budget annually to maintain that septic field, to help them, which we've never spent in, in my nine years, because they take everything themselves. So, should.
The lighthouse is actually maintaining the property.
The lighthouse, yeah. So should we consider moving, should we consider deeding that septic system over to the lighthouse with the covenant that we, the county can tap into it at any time in the future?
I would take the airport manager's building, close into that now.
Not now, but.
What was that?
No.
The airport, do they have their own system?
Yes.
The airport has their own system.
Actually, just had to do some changes to it.
So that's where the easement would come along, if the airport ever needed to tap into it, on this remaining thirty-five acres, we would have to maintain an easement across the north property line, and, and to allow them to pump up into that.
We just want to protect the airport.
To protect the airfield.
Matt, you guys only have, you only have one septic field there north of the building, right, off to the kind of northwest of the building? Is that correct? And do you guys have any, are you guys, but any of those hangars out there have restroom facilities and stuff in them?
Yes, there's actually one.
Right. And it's all pumped down to that one there at the airport, right, the septic system back there, by the, by the office, right? It's got its own field up there? So you got more than one septic field there at the airport? Office? Okay.
So, so where I'm at here is, is we don't have to fix everything in one swoop, all right, so on this septic system and the remaining thirty-five acres, do we just leave that as is for now, or, and, and then?
I, if they've already got two septic fields, I doubt, I don't foresee in the future needing to pump, to buy a lift pump to pump that up there, because you're pumping it uphill.
I, I don't either, but we'd spend a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for it, I just didn't want to just deed it over to somebody, and.
Keep the options open.
But it's been twenty years, so, I mean.
So on that third, on the septic, what, what do you think we should do?
The worst thing is, once we're all gone, is anybody going to remember that's even the county, county property?
They can, they can spend thirty hours like I did, and figure it out, but now.
Every, because I, every, every year, every year, we get to the budget, and.
There is no question.
Every year we get to the budget, it's always a question.
Which has been my point, and we should not be owning stuff that we no longer have a need for, or have a need for in the next twenty-five plus years.
I think we'd deed it over to lighthouse and have it in their contingency if we ever need to tap onto it, because I think that field, the field's five acres is big enough for two of those systems, so, I mean, you really could put another, more, more mound system out there.
Yeah.
As long as we have the right to tap into it, I see no issue, but we don't know what's going to develop at the airport.
Right.
And it, and then if lighthouse ever moves, do we ask for that septic back? Or just keep the covenant?
They're not going to take it with them.
Well, I know, but the new, the new landowner would have to, would have to be.
Boy, this is why he's commissioner, right? No, I'm, but if someone else comes and buys it.
Protect the county, I mean.
If someone comes and buys it, would that covenant still carry over on that?
As long as we can tap into it, yeah.
No, I mean, if someone bought that land, would that covenant go along with that?
Attach with it.
Should, runs with land.
It does, it does go with the land, oh, I, I just didn't know.
Yeah, we'd be protected.
All right, awesome, okay, so deed the septic system over, looking at you, um, and then what did covenant that we can tap into it?
Okay, the way we currently have it is that we're deeding, what, what the last motion was, the way I understood it, was the surface rights to the airport. Okay, and then secondly, you're asking for, to deed the septic system specifically over to the lighthouse.
Different parcels of land.
Sure.
Yeah, uh-huh, so the septic field would now go to the lighthouse, yep, this land is the airport, septic field goes to the lighthouse with the covenant that we can tap into it.
Okay.
And then that gets rid of the septic field, and it gets rid of this land, and then we just have this thirty-five acres or whatever left.
So we'll do a.
I think on that, however we write that contract for covenant for that parcel, for that five acres, it's only got one mound system now, but it needs to be put on there. Good for use, if the county does use it, we could actually build another mound system on the piece of property.
Okay, so we've got any.
I don't know if it's, it may be easier just for the county to maintain it and keep it at the end of the day.
And this is how, I mean, this is the sausage making that goes behind it.
Because I mean, if you, if we have the ability to tap into it, but then it's capacity's full, and then they don't allow us to build another mound, then it's kind of useless.
From what I'm hearing, it can run a small town.
Only thing it's out there running right now is lighthouse.
Right, so this, the capacity of this thing, I don't think you're ever going to consume.
Yeah.
But, you know, we don't, it could be a thousand houses out there, I mean, we don't know.
They might be flying drones that require twenty, fifty people work out there.
Right, so, um, keep it as is, deed it over.
I don't know, I don't, we need to deed it over.
Take care of the airport, and we can.
Let's, let's take that bite first, okay, yeah, let's go ahead and pause on the septic, and then on the remaining thirty-five acres that's left out there, do we continue farming it and just bidding it out? It's currently an out-of-county farmer coming in, just farming it, uh, or do we?
It just goes up for bid every, what, three years?
Do we sell it at public auction, or do we save it for a land swap? I mean, what's the appetite there?
I know our soon-to-be former director of the Economic Development Corporation was interested in the land exchange, which has to do with I sixty-nine interchange, and how aggressive do we get with that, and that's where I'd like to see it go, I'd like to see it donated to the foundation, that they can use a deal on some property that we can get it developed, they can get it developed the way they want it, but. Just my thought.
I don't have any, I really don't have any quarrels how we take care of this piece of property, I don't think the county needs to own it anymore, any way, shape, or form. If we do maintain it, and we do just keep leasing out the farm, and that's what we're going to do with it.
Okay.
We need to spend money on it, right, to make it a production, a more productive farm.
And that's, and that's a concern, the, the concern is perhaps the current leasing isn't overly concerned with the quality of that land.
But that can be written in the lease to where he has to do.
Well, I mean, that's, that'd be above and beyond.
Okay, let's do this, how about this, uh, we can talk to the Economic Development.
I'll talk to Economic Development, I don't have any problem donating that land over to them, if they can use it for fu- future use to transfer properties around.
All right, so we'll go and hold off on that section, too, so we got, we got two of the four done, and we got some good direction on the other two, okay, good discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are, are we okay on?
We're tabling the septic. Or land.
Yeah.
Talk to Economic Development.
Excellent. All right, thank you for all that discussion. The next on the agenda, uh, it's the, the contract for legal services, as we were paying invoices for two thousand, um, twenty-three, we realized that, um, that when we approved, when we approved all the positions that the Commissioners oversee, and we didn't officially approve the contract for the county attorney, so we just need to officially approve that contract. Uh, I just thought it was implied that the contract went with the person, and then in the contract, I did ask for, um, all invoices to be submitted by the fifteenth of the following month, just so for record-keeping, it's just, uh, the details fresher in our minds, so we can verify the invoices, um, better. So, um, so that's the, so that's.
Are those invoices itemized?
Yes.
Or it has hours?
Yeah, and it's only the ones now, so he gets them, so, yeah, they're itemized.
The, the base salary of fifty thousand, are there invoices submitted for those that are itemized?
Not for the base salary, no.
See, I would want, I would recommend they do that, because if you can't measure it, you can't manage it, and we might be underpaying, I'd hate that situation. And just track it, and then we'll see where we're at. And then, along with that, on the actual contract that, uh, generated out of his officers, a misspelling on page two, section eight, to assist the county on pending legal matters, I think should be to assist the county on pending legal matters.
Again?
Page two, section eight, second paragraph.
Oh, got you, yep.
So there's a space.
Yeah.
All right, um, we can make that change, um, as far as the base, the base salary and the hours, um, what do you think of that?
I mean, it should, it should be fine to track the hours, or track and what, is that what you said, track the hours?
The reason we, so, the reason we did this was to get away from that, but if that's the request, I'll, I'll evaluate that, but I know that the reason that we did fifty, and then it's the inverse of the way that it was. Right?
Well, no, you had a base before of seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
And then you build everything else, and again, just, just track it and the hours, and we'll see where it's like.
Track your hours anyhow, that's a grant, I mean.
Yes. Not, not anything other than what this requires me to track, but if it's the request to track everything, I mean, I'll have to do that. But what this says is, for specific things, that has to be submitted, and now it says by the fifteenth of the month, or the preceding time period.
If you track the hours, it's more transparent, and I would point out that the base fee on this has gone from a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, that, that happened last year. The only changes to this are that, um, we added, there was an addendum in February of last year, clarifying that the county attorney receives, uh, the same benefits that all other employees receive, that was the only change to last year.
Which includes health insurance.
Correct.
Which always has, yeah, for, yeah, well before grants.
Considered a county employee.
Yeah, so let's do this, let's go ahead and, and, and track the, um, um, track it hourly, I don't think that necessarily needs to be in the contract, let's go ahead and track that and see how problematic that is.
Track every single.
Whatever they.
All time spent, and you want that by the fifteenth of the month, or do you want the billable amounts by the fifteenth of the month?
I think both.
Yeah, I mean, definitely the billable amounts.
You track all your other work, it shouldn't be an issue.
Let's see if you can track it all, but the, the invoice that you submit, um, is typically one.
Yeah, so, but going forward, I can, I will do that.
If it becomes an issue, just let, let us know.
Yeah.
All right, with that being said, I'd entertain a motion to approve with those changes.
Changes and changes to the contract, just the typo.
Yep, and the typo.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second? I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
One aye.
Two?
Two ays.
Even if I make those changes, you're still a no?
Yeah, that's, let's move on, let's move on.
Good.
Yeah, we need to. Okay. And next up, we have the, um, RQAW.
So, real quick, on number twelve, our next meeting, it was to be determined, it was set aside on our advertisements on a potential outside of, outside, somewhere in the county, that we were going to do a different location, so we need to determine if we're going to stay here or not.
Yeah.
But, one time, and we've, we've always done that in the past, when I've reached out to the community, but then I think it's kind of against the rules, isn't it, or, or not?
Well, now it's going to become challenging, the way that we do our Zooms and stuff with our electronic stuff, so I don't know how, you guys want to do that.
Well, I mean, the electronic stuff isn't required.
Not yet, in legislation, but.
Yeah, it's not required yet, but, um, and even, yeah, we, we can figure all that stuff out, I mean, we have Zooming, I think, anywhere, as long as there's Wi-Fi, so. Anyway, I think, I think it's, uh, I personally really like going to Odin, going to, um, Produce Patch, going down to Southern County, and usually get a little bit, bit better of an audience, we usually do that once or twice a year, we stop during COVID.
During the evening meeting usually, too.
During the evening, evening meeting, I think maybe the twenty-fifth with some of the agenda items we have on there, we probably need to maybe have that one here. Um, especially with the Visitors Bureau and some of this other. Uh, especially with the Visitors Bureau and some of this other stuff, poly stuff.
I don't have any, if we pick a different date out in a year, and if we could still do that, I would like to have it out in the community somewhere.
Yeah, so...
Making an evening meeting around six o'clock.
Let's look at May ninth. The May ninth meeting?
Okay.
I won't be here for May ninth.
Oh, you won't be? Okay, um, how about the May twenty-third meeting?
Okay.
Are you guys around, May twenty-third?
Twenty-third would be fine with me.
Uh, May twenty-third at Produce Patch? It seems to be, I don't know.
They have Wi-Fi there? Do we need Wi-Fi?
Not before July first.
Okay, okay.
Because if it's not streamed, it's not required.
Yeah, Produce Patch is fine with me. Or are we saying the produce bar, right, not patch?
Oh, yeah.
We'll need to reach out just to make sure it's available.
Available.
Okay.
And do a six P M. meeting.
Okay. So let's do May twenty-third, six P M., location TBD, and it would be Produce, Odin, or Offordsville is usually the three that we get. So we'll start with Produce on May twenty-third. At six P M.?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then, I don't know if Grant had the contact for the Produce.
Can get together and figure that out.
Contact, okay. Awesome. Okay, uh, it's RQAW, are they on board? Okay, so, um, now we're going to move into kind of a segue with the RQAW regarding the courthouse, renovation update. They had, they wanted to get the commissioners together just to kind of start the next phase of this, of this project, so. I mean, while, and, and before we do, well, at the beginning, if RQAW and maybe Gary could give the commissioners a brief update on the south entrance. I know we had, we spent a lot of time at the security meeting a couple of weeks ago on using the doors on the south side for an entrance. And I left that meeting feeling that there is no way possible that that's going to happen, but I wanted you to...
It's going to be a huge challenge. I'd like Gary to...
Yeah, yeah, the, the way, that landing is very small. The equipment wasn't going to fit there. So I had looked at closing off the downward, the downstairs, and then moving the stairs back towards the, to the atrium a little bit to give us that entire landing area, and even then it wouldn't be enough room to monitor and, uh, correctly, so. And to make those changes was going to be very expensive to make those changes. Still, we'll be able to go out the doors on the front. Uh, they'll still be able to use, use for ceremonial things, but, uh, for daily business at the courthouse, it's not economically or physically feasible to, uh, to do that. Kind of what we decided.
Now, that's a nay, so he won't have to sign that.
Well, you don't have to put the yays and nays in there.
Yep.
Um, so...
Any other questions?
Well, I know Ron was the one that originally brought that concept up to use the front doors. Obviously, we would love to use the front doors. I just want to make sure that there's no, six months from now, why are we not using the front doors, you know?
It's not.
But see, I, I think that causes a bigger security problem if people can get in and out of those doors without being monitored.
Then we have an alarm.
It'll have an alarm.
You have an emergency alarm.
Okay, and then I would also set it to where maybe you can't get out it unless you can badge it.
Yeah.
Because I consider if somebody wants to do some harm, if they're working in tandem with somebody, they go and let somebody in that door and
That's...
Our security's on the bottom floor and it's...
Yeah, we face that problem at, uh, every school we're in, right? Got like fifty doors at every one of the schools, and they're only supposed to go through one, but some kids letting in nobody at the north end, so. You know, we'll try to minimize that as much as possible.
Have to control them.
Right. But, uh, if the parking lot was on the south side, it might, I don't know, I just think that for people parked to do business, it's egresses into, easiest access is into.
I understand everybody's thoughts of using that south entrance. It's beautiful, walk up those stairs, it's grand when you walk in there, but at the end of the day, how to make that secure, in my opinion, it just, it's kind of impossible.
It was tough. We tried.
I was going to say, I don't agree with it, but if that's what everybody wants to do, I don't want to spend a ton of money.
Right.
But it's a shame.
It, and I understand your point, but it would require to redo those, the basement stairs I said would turn into closet space, which is what they would like for the basement anyway, they would like that. But at the end of the day, to close off those two stairwells and make them where we can work on them, you know, have to be standing on them, have our equipment on them, and then move the actual stairs that you walk up back into the atrium a little bit to give that extra room, and even then we may not have.
And then to put a ramp on the south side because now there's no more east side entrance.
Yeah, but there was a way we would run down every time.
Multiple millions of dollars.
When they built that building a hundred years ago, they just missed the boat, didn't they?
They just didn't think, they just didn't think, they didn't think it through.
They weren't forward thinkers.
It's like real from that tunnel over in the corner, get everybody in that way, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no kidding.
The dungeon tunnel, right. That's not connected anymore.
Well, I just want to make sure everyone knew that everyone, me, RQAW, the sheriff, and me, everyone did a great job trying to really evaluate, how can we utilize those doors?
Doors, yeah.
And my only prerogative is that their doors are their walls, but having a door that doesn't open, you gotta make sure that we're not left with that.
Right.
Either need to be emergency exits or make it a wall or make it something, so. Okay, thanks, Gary.
Anything else on that?
I think we're good on that for now. So we'll get ready to turn it over to RQAW. Um, I, I think there's several online here. So Rebecca, if you, or Jason, or, um, whoever wants to lead the charge here.
Yeah.
I think I see Laura. See one in the back there?
That was how we get to speak.
So yes, RQAW, are you ready? Okay. Uh, Jason, can you hear us okay? Or is that Jason? Or is that, who's the top line? I can't see the names there.
Jason Soderlin is the second picture down of, below the commissioners there.
What are you in there?
Okay.
Laura's next, and a number, and Whitney Drymon.
Okay, do we have audio or is Dale available? Okay. Jason, can you hear us?
Yes.
Jason, yeah.
All right. Let's see if we can figure out the audio on our side. We apologize. Okay.
That's for that.
Okay, so is having to call this number an extension? Yeah, I've got a number they can call into here. Um, why don't we just have them call this conference line? Yeah, we'll, we'll spare you, and we'll spare us as well.
Sign the claims, can't we? We haven't approved them yet.
Approved yet. Probably kid though. I don't have any issue with them.
Nate? Go ahead and approve the claims and get those signed while we're...
Oh, yeah, good. Thank you. Now, while we fix these I T. issues, we're going to go ahead and approve the payroll and, or go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the payroll and claims.
Submoved.
Um, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thank you for that. If there's a high probability, I would have...
Rebecca, this is Jennifer, the, uh, commissioners. Can you hear us okay now?
Yeah, I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now through this, so.
Okay, let's, at least one of us can talk, uh, from RQAW. So we, we do have with us this morning, we have Clara, Jonathan, Whitney, Emma, and who does our interiors, who's Soderlin. And thank you, uh, Gary, for that presentation on building security. I do have images that we developed if anyone would like to take a look at them. We looked at three options for moving security to the main floor. Uh, we also entertained the notion of moving security down to that landing area, um, and, uh, they all met with some challenges. Um, and we feel really good about the decision to move, you know, keep the security at the east side of the building. Uh, from a functionality standpoint, it works better. We know that we can refurbish the doors and, um, use a, um, exit alarm device and make those work. We'll take a look at them. But we, we concur that, uh, the difficulties of utilizing that south entry as a main entry, um, it just wasn't designed for that. And, and, um, while we could probably figure out something that works, we feel like it would be, uh, expensive and slightly, honestly, if we had to add a ramp. So, uh, we concur with the decision to put the security checkpoint on the east side of the building. Um, so just real quickly, we are, um, in the process of the design development phase of the courthouse renovation. Excuse me. And during this phase, we'll have a minimum of six meetings. There may be more, but we know we're at a minimum number. We'll have two security meetings, two departmental head meetings, and we'll give you two updates at the commissioners' meeting. Um, Jen is helping us with scheduling the meetings with the department. Uh, but today we wanted to, we wanted to give you an update, uh, on kind of, or get your input before we meet with the departments next week. We wanted to, at, at those meetings, we'll be discussing things like door types and door hardware and card reader locations and tasteful details. Uh, we'll start a discussion, uh, with the courts about low voltage requirements, like a recording system, et cetera. But for today, we wanted to talk with you about interior finishes for the project. And I don't know if you can hear me? Yeah, it looks like you can. Okay, so what we did is we just marked up a floor plan real quickly with kind of what we typically see for interior finishes. And before we, you know, speak with the departments about their interior finishes, we wanted you guys to kind of look at globally what we're thinking about for the entire building. Give us any input that you might have. So we wanted to, we wanted to talk about floor finishes and countertop materials and, uh, base and wall cap materials, and then kind of look at a courtroom, kind of like good, better, best images for a courtroom. So Laura, do you, I, well, I don't know if we can hear you. Can we hear you, Laura? Probably not. Yeah, okay. Let's, let's run through the floor finishes, um, that we, we typically see in courthouse renovation. So for the prosecutor's office, um, a lot of those, those interior finishes, you know, it's been recently renovated. And so we would use, utilize those existing materials, you know, unless there was an issue with some of them. But the areas of renovation where we're actually pulling out walls, et cetera, will need to modify the floor finish. So in those areas, if you look over to the left or the west side of the plan, you can see in the prosecutor's office, there's a number of rooms that have a C. on that, which stands for carpet. Um, one of the things we looked at doing for entrances lobbies that come from the center, what I call interior courtyard, into the various spaces, we would use a, uh, premium grade of L V T, one that is compatible with the existing floor finish, um, of the lobby area. And then if you look at, um, let's see, so for A P S, again, we're, you know, because it's primarily an office function, we would look at carpet. Um, the secure area, security checkpoint, we would use L V T. Lock-off mat at the security entrance, so we're not bringing a lot of stuff into the, the space. And then restrooms, tile finish on the floors. And a waste cut tile on the walls. Any questions or comments?
The carpets will be just like a, kind of like the annex, a squared, squared carpet, so it can be replaced.
Yeah, 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 they'll be carpet tile and you can replace them.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll pay attention to where it's here as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the L, the L V Ts, do you want to use on that, on like, the prosecutor's office, I think, is, it's like wood grain or something? Is that correct or not?
Yeah, I think it is wood grain, as I recall.
But you're going to try to make it more comparable to what the terraza floor is, or top of that?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take into account what the terraza floor is because the direction that we've gone is, let's think about when we enter every space, you know, each space that has a, an internal lobby, we'd like that to kind of be compatible with what's there. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Next floor, Laura? Okay, so starting on the left side again, in the clerk's office, again, we've, we've got carpet on the floor, L V T. in that lobby area, when you enter into the clerk's space, we have L V T. in the election room, there to the south portion of the clerk's office. Um, moving up further north, for the northwest corner, in the magistrate's courtroom, we have carpet in all of the administrative functions, tile in the restroom, L V T. in the lobby, vestibule, those, carpet in the courtroom. Okay? And then when we get to the security holding area, we, we'll have to take a look at what's there on the floor. Um, I believe it's a, a ripped slab, so we think that we might be able to expose concrete there, um, which is honestly the most durable material you can get. Yeah, but we'll, we'll have to take a look at that. We'll have to...
Like a polished concrete or something for those areas?
Yeah, concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. And then vestibule, uh, L V T., Attorney Conference Room, uh, L V T. for, you know, I mean, we understand that there are sometimes some issues in maintaining those areas, so we would, we would recommend L V T. in that area as well. Interior court, carpet, um, and again, you know, we'll, we'll work with the judges on the parole if they'd like to. on the material that they'd like to have behind the judge's bench and the court reporter, that kind of thing. Um, we see either carpet or LVT, kind of depends on what they want. Some judges don't like the sound of impact or footfall, uh, coming into the courtroom, so they go with carpet. Um, and then when we get into the judge's suite, we've got tile in the restroom. Um, again, LVT in the lobby, carpet in the jury room, as well as in the judge's chambers and the reporting area. I think I covered everything. Tile in the restroom. Um, any questions, comments?
Looks good.
Okay. And then the final floor, on the left-hand side of the west, we've got probation. And again, carpet in all of the office spaces, as well as the open office area, tile in the restroom, LVT for the drug testing area, for some durability there. And, uh, carpet in the, uh, offices to the east of that area, LVT at the entry. I, I feel like I'm repeating myself a lot, but, um, you know, so when we get up to the northwest corner, we've got a storage area, which would be LVT. And then carpet in the probation officer and, and juvenile probation officer offices. Moving over to the break room, which is that green area, just to the east, is LVT. And then tile in the restroom. Then further to the east, in our waiting and restroom areas, LVT from the waiting, tile in the restrooms, concrete, then to the east for the holding cells, security corner. Um, and the circuit court, again, kind of similar finishes, LVT for the attorney room, vestibule, and, uh, carpet in the courtroom itself. Carpet in the jury space, tile in the restrooms, LVT in the lobby, and then carpet for the judge's chambers and the court staff. Then to the, further to the west, the attorney lounge and the attorney conference room, LVT. Any questions or comments on that?
I think it looks good. That, the only, my suggestion would be on the, on the holding cells, where it's concrete, that we could actually stain that concrete and, and seal it, so it's easier to clean.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we would, we would seal the concrete for... Trouble.
Yeah, and on the, uh, L- on the LVT, um, in our health department, I mean, we... Two things. One, in our foyer of our annex, it's extremely slick when it's wet. Uh, un- un- not, unnorman, normally slick. And then in our health department, it's, it was, uh, gapping a little bit in spots. It could just be an installation thing, but just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Um, so are you saying then that, um, I mean, we have, let's see. If we go, Lara, can you go back to the basement where we'll be entering the building for the first level? Yeah. So as we come in, um, we'll have a lock off mat, which will, will help somewhat with, you know, if you're coming in from the rain. Um, are you suggesting for the secure area, because the next, next thing people will do is go to the right and go through the security checkpoint? Would you like to see a material different from LVT?
No, I just, I mean, I've walked on LVT many, many times, but what we have here in the annex is just not normally, it's just...
It's slick when it's wet.
I don't know what, what it is or what they put on top of it, but it's just, it's just extremely slick, so I just want...
Yeah.
I mean, it's gotta be a...
You know, one thing, one thing we might look at doing is using, like a Huguen tile or something similar to that. And if you've seen them, I know most people have seen them. They're in the vestibule and they're, they lay up like just a, you know, a, a carpet tile, but they're made for, you know, rain and dirt and that kind of thing. And if we, you know, I think maybe we look at finding an attractive one and putting it maybe both, both in the vestibule and in the, at the checkpoint area.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be the highest traffic. I mean, everyone's gonna walk over that spot, so it's gotta be something we can keep clean or easily replace, and that's durable and non-slick.
Yeah, I think that's probably a really good point. Um, yeah, well, and again, you know, at the, at one of these input meetings, we'll be showing you interior finish selections. So you'll, you'll get to look at the actual selections. Today, we just wanted to make sure that our assumptions, you guys concur with our assumptions. So we'll take a look at that. I think that's a really good point. All right. Um, we also wanted to talk to you a little bit about casework and countertops. And we have highlighted the countertops. They're in purple. And a lot of times what we use for countertops, particularly if they're in wet areas, such as, you know, restrooms and, uh, break rooms and things like that, is we use a solid surface countertop. Um, and then, you know, plastic laminate countertop if it, if it's not a wet area. So like, for example, say you've got a printing area with a countertop. A lot of times we'll just make that plastic laminate, just for economy's sake. Uh, but we wanted to kind of get your input. You can see where these counters are located. Um, again, you know, we've got one at the lobby for the clerk's staff. We have a small printing counter, I believe it is, that's been to the north of that, yeah. Um, and then in the magistrate court, we, again, we've got a, uh, a countertop at the check-in area. And then, Lara, do we have those, in the magistrate courtroom, are those desks the countertops where you're showing, kind of, I'm wondering if those wouldn't be desks, some of those? Um, and then, I guess, I guess you can't talk, can you? Okay, all right.
Did they help you figure anything out?
So... Primarily, I guess that, that's really good, the judge's bench, if you, if you will. And a lot of times, you know, those will be something that is custom-made to fit the courtroom itself. And so, uh, typically, we would have a solid surface on the judge's bench. And then going to superior court, again, we've got the judge's bench, court reporter, et cetera. Solid surface typically is what we would use there. And then we have a countertop in the conference jury room. And again, it depends on if, you know, if we have a sink, we would recommend that be solid surface for maintenance purposes. Um, and then we've got a small, we've got a small countertop in the court reporter area.
When you talk about plastic, uh, countertops, is that Formica is what we were talking about?
Yeah, yeah. And the reason we like to use like solid surface instead of plastic laminate for areas that get wet is just for delamination.
Right.
We find that solid surface lasts a lot longer.
Some of those areas, I don't mind using quartz. You know, we got a historic building there and it's got a lot of stonework in the building, and I don't really wanna cut corners down to the point where you're using plastic everywhere or solid surface. I would prefer to have some quartz in the, in the building too, to emulate the historic value of the building.
Yeah. Well, we can definitely look at, uh, solid, when I say solid surface, you know, there's, there's also quartz tile, solid surface, they're kind of in this similar family. And we will have samples for you to look at, um, so you can kind of see them live in person.
Okay.
So, okay. Um, well, it, I mean, it, it sounds like maybe the direction is to provide solid surface everywhere?
No, not, not necessarily everywhere. I mean, some of the countertops were just laying books on and stuff and some of the offices, you know, they, those could be laminate. Um, but I'm talking about like the judge's benches and more pronounced areas where we could, public does business and stuff.
Yeah, more high-profile areas.
Yes.
So what, what I suggest then would be that you provide solid surface or quartz tile on the, the judge's benches, on the countertops where the customers come in to interface with the department. Um, and, you know, in areas that are gonna get wet. The other areas, such as the printing counter, uh, would just be plastic laminate.
Yes.
And that should last, that should be fine, I would think. Does that...
Yeah, that's...
Concur with that?
Yes, I, yes.
Okay. I, I don't know that we need to go through all of the countertops in, in that case?
I don't think so either. I think, just like you said, the high traffic, high profile areas and high traffic areas, we would stay with solid surface and then everything else could be plastic laminate.
Okay. Okay. All right. The other thing we wanted to talk about is the base and wall cabinet material. And, um, you know, typically, we'll see either plastic laminate or wood, um, in those areas. And we, for base cabinets and wall cabinets, we typically will have them, you know, if we have a printing station, we'll have base and wall cabinets so they can store all of their office supplies in, in those, um, in the, you know, and you may want to do a combination, you know, in the courtroom, you know, all of those, everything from the judge's benches, you don't have to think about the jury box railing to divide the courtroom area from the gallery. Uh, things like that are casework items that we look at. And, and one of the things we wanted to do is to show you kind of the good, better, best images. Um, and, you know, we chose images that are kind of in a similar, uh, color, you know, fairly neutral colors. Um, but, you know, the first image on the left, upper left, which would be, you know, kind of good. We've got a LVT floor, or actually, we think, I think it's sheet good, actually, that rolls up onto the judge's bench to, uh, make that, you know, to act as a base for the wall and for the judge's bench. And then, you know, primarily, the, the finishes are very simple here, where we've got a lot of drywall. We've got a pretty standard lay-in ceiling, um, with standard recessed lights. Um, and so this is kind of the, you know, the good image. And then if we look at the better image, and this is, um, here we see, you know, there's a, a laminate floor, I think it's LVT floor, I can't remember. Um, but we've got wood, uh, that makes up the railing and the judge's bench, court reporter, uh, and witness stand, all kind of in the same family. You can see that there's a chair rail height paneling kind of behind there. The ceiling is two-by-two lay-in with some, uh, round light fixtures that are kind of popped in there and some exposure of bulkhead. Um, and so, and the, the furniture, you know, again, it's, there's a distinction between what is related specifically to the judge and, and everything sort of up front as opposed to the furniture items for, you know, use of attorneys, et cetera. The, um, graphic in that one, on the, on the wall behind the judge's bench is, uh, you know, just the laminated, or, um, that's all, I think, yeah, laminate, just a laminated image. And then the third image we have is a courtroom that's actually being constructed right now, and this is in Steben County. But you can see that we have full height paneling. And then, uh, certainly, um, we've got trim, wood trims, both at the ceiling and chair rail height. We have in the center, um, we've got, uh, some stone or, I mean, I think it's porcelain tile that we have. And then the steel that's in the center would be custom-made and, uh, labored. And then the finish is carpet. Again, primarily, we have carpet in all of the courtrooms. This one has the, some of the wood there on the left-hand side is perforated, wood panels, course, acoustics, most of it is, is solid wood. Uh, and then you can see the ceiling detail, the coppered ceiling, so there's a fair amount of detail in that as well. So this kind of gives you an idea of kind of the, you know, when you zoom out and you look at all three of these, they're kind of in the same, we, we chose images that are kind of in the same color tone, um, neutral. But just to kind of hone in on the details and think about that. Uh, so we wanted to show you these images and just kind of get your input from, you know, the direction that you would like to go with the courtroom.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, Rebecca. So, yeah, so we'll have to, um, obviously, we gotta set the general guidelines for the interior of these rooms because this is where the price really starts to, starts going and...
Yeah.
Obviously, I mean, I think, I, I personally would rule out the, you know, the bottom one, the...
Especially if you start talking about wood and custom cabinets and everything else. I mean, this room here, we, we did spend some expense on it, but this is all laminated, all laminated Formica here in this room. Which would cut costs. I mean, you get the same effect at a cheaper price, but I don't know. I don't, without talking to the judges, know what they're, what they expect out of a courtroom.
Well, it's true.
I mean, I don't wanna spend short amount of money on cracking woodwork, for example, something that we can do with Formica too, so...
I, I would suggest with me or something like we did in the Commissioners' room, which is like your option too. We got a little bit of drop ceiling and a portion of it. We've got whatever backing here we have behind us. So I would say, let's stay in that lane, um, but, you know...
Depending on what the judges think, I always like to look at, at base and then an alternate bid. I'd like to know what they all cost before I make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't wanna cut...
Doesn't have to be exact, but an estimate, yeah.
We're trying to build this, we're in remodeling twenty years.
Yeah, I think one, option one is out. I mean, it's just...
It's, to me, it's basic and stuff, and I don't think the judges would settle for that anyhow.
But I mean, we're not willing, I mean, we're not willing to spend a million dollars more.
No, but I think we need to do it tastefully and then do it for a long-term project too.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. This, this actually really helps us to understand kind of where you guys are coming from. Um, and so I think your feedback has been invaluable. And we'll, you know, take these comments and, and as we're starting to look at interior finishes, well, that will help us.
But we, we definitely don't, we definitely don't want it any less quality than the Commissioners' room.
Right.
Um, and...
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're not, we're not, yeah, just wanna make sure.
Yeah, above and beyond what the, either at the point of the Commissioners' room or above it, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, above and below.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
But then all the other offices, all the other offices, I mean, if you're talking about, I know you said specifically the, uh, courtrooms, but all the rest of the offices, I think, you know, we could just do like we've done here, just laminated cabinets everywhere and still get the, still get a good look with wood grain and everything.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, perfect. All right. Um, I think that that is everything that I had on the agenda. Next week, as I mentioned, we'll start to work with the department. Jen's gonna help us set up those meetings. And, and we'll, we'll meet, we'll be about an hour per department. And like I said, we're gonna discuss everything from door and door hardware to, uh, casework, you know, what, how many drawers, how many in the base cabinets, et cetera. So we'll start to dive into the details of this. Meanwhile, uh, we'll start to order some samples for interior finishes based on the feedback that you've given us. Um, and that, we'll come back to you with those samples and get your input at the next Commissioners' meeting, I believe it is.
Okay.
And then we will take those interior selections out to the department and talk with them.
Okay, I guess, one question I do have, like on the courtrooms, if you guys can give us a... Once you guys finalize exactly the layout and the materials you're using, can, would it be possible to get a 3D image of that, of those rooms?
Yeah, yeah. So what we'll, um, what we'll do is kind of like that bottom, um, rendering there in the bottom, that's an exterior rendering that we did for Steben County to help them to visualize, you know, their courtroom space.
I think that, I think that would help a lot for everybody involved, even the, even the judges, yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
So at this point, is, is it, is it time to officially pass the baton over to that side of the Commissioners' tables, since we're getting more into the weeds and the design stuff, or...
We can, I mean.
Or do you want to wait until we get?
I'd wait till we get to bid.
The actual bid, okay, so we'll keep.
I think we should keep, to keep these three commissioners.
We'll, we'll keep the entire board engaged until we start moving some dirt and.
So I've got a lot of ideas, I know you guys got ideas too, so I don't want to, I don't want to run over somebody's toes either.
I just want to voice that there's.
I just want to make sure when we build this building, we remodel this building, that we're not taking away from historical value, that even, I know I would, we want to make a modern office for everybody on the, on the office side, but I'm still, still need to keep it historic too.
It's gonna be a beautiful building when we're done. Awesome. All right, sorry for the IT issues. Yeah, we had our IT director looking and, and we were unable to find the cause, so sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay, that's all right.
Okay.
Okay, so the next time I meet with you guys to give you an update, let me go check, will be, uh, I think it's 425. I believe it's at that meeting, so we'll give you an update from our departmental meetings. We'll have some intervention selections that you can look at.
All right, sounds great. Any questions gentlemen?
Nope.
Okay, appreciated, our KAW. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay.
There off the phone, has anybody done a follow-up with the office holders in this building to say, because sometimes you see a great idea, I need this counter here and that counter. Is it working out like they wanted, or, I mean, I don't want to lose the information, what we learned from this building on the other.
Not sure that process has, I mean, with the different workflows each department has, I, I didn't think about.
A lot of it wouldn't be similar, but maybe the clerk, possibly.
Yeah.
Just, just a thought, yeah.
Good though, I guess.
I guess maybe just have Lauren reach out to the other office holders here and.
Would you mind sending an email out to the office holders here? Just ask them, is there any do-betters?
And they're in your guys' face.
Just like the tile, I mean, how many of us have almost just bet it up there, so. Okay, good, good point. So yeah, we'll keep the, um, the board of commissioners engaged up to the point till we need to.
I think something about to bid. Quick question, I guess, we're done with the space issues, right? We're done with those? Nothing's moving now?
Well, I, I, I don't think, I don't think so. Um, I don't think so. The request I had is, is there any way we can make some of the offices, like the judge's chambers, the exact size? Because one's like 30, 40 square feet or, just because we don't, if 380 square feet will suffice, then we don't need 425, let's use that for another thing. But the way the windows were laid out, I, I don't think they were able to move, move the walls. So that's, when people ask why, that's why, we are able to, it's not that one needed 425. And then they're still working on some space for her, um, new collection machines. And she's working with Scott, uh, so there may be this domino effect where up the storage downstairs, we may have to find another spot for it. Maybe if it's a standalone building somewhere nearby, um, but we, we don't know quite yet, but her stuff could store downstairs.
Well, that brings up another point. I know we looked at the building back here for storage. Uh, property that's to the east will probably come up and also to the north. Go ahead and check into that.
We need to get.
On this lot, on this, yeah, lot.
Can you bird dog, bird dog that?
I've had conversations.
We need us to.
Told them that I believe we would be interested.
I, I think as much contiguous property now as we can get and then we can resell it later. Because I think an off-site storage facility nearby is going to probably be appropriate. And then we can bring the Hoover stuff in, bring the basement stuff up. And then, because it's expensive storage space downstairs for what we paid for this place. Okay, so I'll just put that in your lap. Okay, awesome, okay.
I'll ask somebody else to do that because I, I spent too much time on those other properties trying to get bought.
It worked out really good and you did a great job, so. All right, if there's no, nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.